Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call this regularly scheduled and newly posted meeting of the Harlingen City Commission to Order. But before we begin, I need to explain a couple of things about the agenda. Due to a mechanical error when the agenda was scanned into the scanner posting on the Internet, the scanner didn't take Page Three. And so, or rather, yeah, it's taking Three and Four. And so, as a result, we've been advised that we should not take up any items on Three and Four, which includes City's communication. And I apologize for the...
Page Four.
I'm sorry. Page Four, right. Page Four only.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, then it's not really posted.
And so, anyway, we apologize for any inconvenience. So, we won't be able to take up those items. That's what the advice given. So here, and then I'm gonna go after the pledge allegiance and the invocation, I'm gonna go directly to Items Five and Six. But at this time, I'd like to call upon Commissioner Mike Masmark to lead us in.
Holy God, holy mighty, holy immortal, have mercy on us. Dear God, please take a look after and please bless and comfort the sick, the dying, those in prison. Please have mercy on and bless the President, all civil authorities, and the armed forces. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. Glad to have you here at our meeting tonight. And I'd like to skip ahead to Items, rather Six and Seven. And with Item Six, discuss, Consider, Take Action to Approve an Order on Thursday, final rating authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of approximately $3,200,000 in aggregate principal amount of City Harlingen, Texas combination tax and revenue certificates of obligations, Series Two, 2013, securing payment thereof by authorizing levy of annual add-on tax, approving and authorizing the execution of all instruments and procedures thereto, including a paying agent registrar agreement approving form of official statement declaring an effective date.
Mayor and City Commissioners, we have our financial advisor, Ann Tricant, who will be making a presentation to the City Commission. We also have here Noel Valdez, who is our bond council, who has assisted us throughout this process. And at this point, the City is looking to go out for certificate obligations, for stream improvements for Brazil and Teague Road, and all that, and make her presentation.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, Mr. Uranda, it's a pleasure to be back in Harlingen again this evening. I handed out a presentation, and if I may ask you to please take a look at it, we'd like to walk through a couple of items this evening. As part of the bond issuance process, we always work with the rating agencies and felt like it was important to highlight some of the comments that we got from the reports. We'd like to acknowledge Mr. Uranda and Ms. Trevino did an excellent job in visiting, both with Standard and Coors and Fitch, and we had an extremely beneficial call that touched on so many aspects of the city, not just the debt, but the finances, the economy, and governance as well. Both of the ratings, with Standard and Coors and Fitch, were reaffirmed, the AA minus ratings, both with a stable outlook. A couple of comments that we'd like to highlight from Standard and Coors is they noted the diverse and expanding economy, which continues to benefit from international trade with Mexico, consistently strong financial position, low direct debt levels, and moderate overall debt ratios. In our opinion, Harlingen's financial performance and position remain very strong. And in the last bullet point, you can see where they talked about if the sustained trend for economic growth continues, as well as a couple of other things, that there could potentially be an upgrade in the future, which I think is a very strong and very positive comment. When we look at Fitch, again, they talk about the strong financial flexibility, your proximity to Mexico, and the expanding transportation network, the diversification of the local economy, and the city's incentives that have helped for that to occur. And then they do talk about the stable financial operations with strong financial reserves. I do think it's very important to remember that when the rating agencies are looking at you, they are benchmarking you, not only with other cities in Texas, but with other cities across the nation. And so, to get comments like this, I think is very much a positive, and really, the commission and your staff should be congratulated for these type of comments. On the next page, just a quick snapshot of the bond bidders index of municipal bonds. This chart goes back to 1992, and it shows where we are from a historical perspective. This is not the actual rate the City did receive, but we think it's an excellent barometer for what interest rates are doing. The most current number that we have is a 3.99. On the fourth page, we decided again, based on the success that we had with our last competitive sale, to use the competitive sale method again. And I think, I hope that you will be very pleased with the results that we had. In the top-left corner of this page, we showed the bidders that we had, Robert W. Baird, BOSC, Stevens, Coastal, and Southwest Securities. And I had something, again, happen for the first time on the sell for Harlingen. If I may draw your attention to the bid from Robert W. Baird and BOSC, if you'll note, you actually have to go to the fourth decimal to the right to find the first number in the difference. They both, the winning bid is a 2.68328, the cover bid was a 2.6839. And then what's even more interesting, if you look at the third bid from Stevens, it's only less than one basis point off at a 2.69. This is, like I said, this is the first time I have seen not only the winning bid and the cover bid is close, but the top three bids is close. And what I believe that it really indicates is how competitively this was bid in the markets today. I do think it's interesting, I don't know if y'all are familiar with Robert W. Baird, but this bid came out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin. So, you have a lot of interest in the bonds nationally, not just here in Texas. On the right-hand side, we show what the actual maturity schedule looks like. And we did also want to highlight, if you'll remember, last time, we had 50 basis points between the high bid and the low bid. This time, between the high bid and the low bid, it's only just 20 basis points. On the next page, we have the transaction summary. We show the debt service on the left-hand side. And as you will note, when we did the notice of intent, we had a not-to-exceed of $3,200,000. But because of the refinement on the cost of issuance, and as well as some of the premium that we received on the bid, the City is only going to have to issue $3,070,000 versus the $3,200,000, and you get the full deposit to the project fund as was requested. On the sixth page, we wanted to just put in a summary because we realized that this was Phase Two of the project that was done at the end of last year. And one of the things that we wanted to highlight was prior to the original transaction late last year, we thought that the total P&amp;I was going to be about $12,670,000. But based on the very low interest rate we received the end of last year, and the rate that we have for your consideration today, the total principal and interest is $11,229. So, that's a savings of $1,442,000, or 11.38 percent less than what we projected when we started this process. And that is, again, a reflection of the very low interest rate environment and the very, very competitive bids that the City received for this issue. So, on the next page, we would like to recommend that the City approved the bid from Robert W. Baird. We believe that the city's debt service costs have been reduced because of the very low interest rate environment. We want to thank the staff, in particular, Mr. Uranda and Ms. Trevino, because they have been extraordinarily helpful. We know they have so many day-to-day tasks, and they always make the time to help us. And there's a lot involved with the disclosure document, the rating agencies, the structuring, and we greatly appreciate always making time to help us. And then we also want to thank the City. It's truly been an honor to be your financial advisor, and we very much appreciate the long-term relationship that we've had. And so, we, just so you know, we do have the actual numbers behind Tab One, and we have the full rating reports behind Tab Two. And so, with that, I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I have a few here. So, we will be paying off chunks of the principal starting in 2015. Do I interpret that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's not interest and then the balloon payment in 20 years, but we will knock that off as we go along.
Yes, sir. We have principal beginning in 2015, all the way through 2035, amortizing over time.
And then, just for openness and full disclosure, so what does this cost the City from your firm?
Okay, if I may ask you to turn to the first page behind Tab One. If you look at the cost of issuance, the cost of issuance for this transaction is $68,000. That includes our fee, bond council's fee, the attorney general's fee, the printing of the official statement, the distribution of the official statement. It is the rating agency fee to Standard and Coors, the rating agency fee to Fitch, and a couple of the other costs associated with doing the transaction. So, the entire cost of issuance are $68,000, and of that, it's just very similar to what we had last time. I believe our fee is about $26,000, maybe $27,000. It's not any more than that.
Thank you.
The underwriter's discount fee is...
Yes, sir. The underwriter's discount fee is just under $47,000, and that is the fee that is paid to the underwriter. And you have to...
Now we know why they speak so highly of us, $46,000. And I like the way they put "underwriter's discount," right, I mean, instead of "fee."
Yes, sir. The way that that works is, if you'll remember, the bids that came in, we take the lowest cost. So, it's a combination of the interest rate, as well as the fee that's paid to the underwriter. And so, our, so Robert W. Baird had the lowest combined when we looked at the underwriter's discount and the interest rates. And the reason that they call it a discount is that when we go to settle at closing, they will actually net out their fee and pay the City the net amount. And so, we factor that into our numbers when we look at the deposit to the project fund. That's why they call it a discount, because you don't actually get paid and then turn around and pay them. They netted out of the actual, of the actual cost related to the interest and expenses.
And so, the attorney general's fee, that's a state of Texas, taking a chunk of money?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It's a standard on all bond issues. The minimum is $700,000, then it's based at about 1 percent of the bond amount up to, I believe it's $9,000 or $10,000.
And I guess for transparency, for the public's benefit, this will be paid off in 2025, 2035, if we didn't accelerate it and pay it earlier at an interest expense of $1.196 million, right?
Yes, sir, Commissioner, that is correct. And it's very interesting, I mean, we, this has, actually, we were able to get a 2021 call, and in most bond issues in Texas, you have what we call the standard ten-year call. But because of the very low interest rate environment and because of the competition for bonds, we were able to negotiate a shorter one for you. But then I kind of laughed, because given the very low interest rate on this, I'm not exactly sure we're gonna have a refinancing opportunity in 2021.
Well, that brings up a good point, because it's a really low interest rate, and the possibility, statistical possibility that down the road you could do better is not very likely. So, the chances of us attempting to do better and spend money by the time you go through the cost of doing it, it may not weigh out, and you may have to just amortize it out through the year.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
But the downside of it is, it's still debt, and it's still interest, and it's still not good, and it still grows the size of government, so that is a downside.
The positive about the call option is that the call option solely rests with the City. You have the ability to make the decision. If interest rates are lower, you can refinance and go for a lower interest rate. The purchaser has bought the bonds, assuming that they would be out to maturity, so it's solely at the discretion and the option of the City if it makes financial sense.
Well, just to put this in context for the listening audience out there, and the public, this is part of, this was all part of the package that we put together for the SAM's Wholesale Warehouse Project. So, this isn't anything, even though we're doing it now, it was anticipated and it was approved back when we originally approved the overall project plan for SAM's. And what this will do is to provide funding so that we can improve Brazil and Teague Road, which need to be improved anyway, but they'll also provide greater access to that entire development where SAM's warehouse club is. And the source of repayment of the debt has been identified as increased revenues from the tax increment refinancing zone. That is, the things that will be built, that will be built out there in the zone add property tax revenue to our revenues. And so, we're using that added value from the project itself to actually repay this debt. So, there's a, there's a source of repayment identified, and it, and the source of repayment actually comes from the projects themselves. So, that's how all that, all this fits together. We did it, we're doing, we're doing debt issuance in two stages. We did one debt issuance earlier, and now we're doing the second one at this time, so that we can do these other projects associated with that development called Harlingen Heights. So, are there any other questions? If there's none, so you kind of look like you had a question?
Yeah, I do have a question. I'm looking at the principal in Twenty-eight, Twenty-nine, and Thirty, all of a sudden it drops to $50,000. I mean, what is that?
Yes, sir, Commissioner, that's an excellent question. If I may ask you to turn to Page Six. As the mayor...
Of Tab One?
Of Tab One, yes, sir. As the mayor said, the intended source of repayment are the revenues that come from the TERS.
Correct.
And the agreement that the City has with the county is that they have a 15-year participation in the TERS, and the City has a longer participation in the TERS. So, what we tried to do was to match the amortization so we could put as much in the 15-year period when the county will be participating, but to still allow about 1.19 times coverage. Then after the county is no longer participating, the principal goes down, because that will then be solely repaid by the City. So, we factored in when we did a very in-depth analysis in conjunction with the staff, looking at the projected growth in the assessed valuation, what would be coming from the county, and what would be coming from the City. So, that's, that's an excellent question.
And I think it's also notable to mention that the money that's contributed from the TERS is add-on tax above and beyond a certain threshold that determined when the TERS was created.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
That'll get rolled back in and redeveloped inside this area. The downside of that is that it doesn't come into the general fund to offset growth in our, in our central government expenditures, but it does create a development. So, eventually, as you pointed out, 15 to 20 years down the road, what develops elsewhere will start to benefit in terms of add-on tax for the rest of the city. Is that pretty much?
Are there any other questions? All right, ask the City to try to read the caption.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of $3.2 million in aggregate principal amount of City Harlingen, Texas combination tax and revenue certificates of obligations, Series Two, 2013, securing payment thereof by authorizing the levy of an annual add-on tax, approving and authorizing the execution of all instruments and procedures related thereto, including a paying agent registrar agreement, approving the form of official statement, and declaring an effective date.
And does the motion need to include the recommendation to approve the bid from Robert W. Baird?
Mayor, my apologies for interrupting, but the amount read was 3.2, and that's because that's what was on the agenda, partially in 3.2. The actual amount that was settled after final pricing is $3,070,000.
Mayor, do we have to do the amount, adjusted amount, $3,070?
Yes, sir.
Does the motion need to approve the bid from Robert W. Baird?
You can't. Yeah.
I also meant to include the bid being awarded to Robert W. Baird.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, black sign, motion carries. All right, thank you all. We know that you have a long drive ahead of you, so we wanted to let you make this presentation so that you can be safe in getting back home.
Appreciate the comment.
Thank you, everybody, for your help. Appreciate it.
Okay, so we'll go back to Item One, which is Public Announcement of Events. Are there any announcements of events?
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is Courtney, and I'm from the Harlingen Commission and Business Group, and I wanted to give you an update on the upcoming events for April and May. On April the 13th, Joe Garza Productions presents Legends of Rock, that is going to take place at Montsey Hill Park. They will be featuring Boston, or, I'm sorry, Fran Coswell, formerly of Boston, along with Sugar Brick, with CD. And the gates open at 4:00, and the music starts at 5:10. The tickets are $15, and all proceeds go to the R G D Food Bank. You can buy tickets at Olympic Gym located on Jacksonville Street. On April the 27th, the City of Harlingen will be having their community-wide trash-off day at the Casa de Amistad Parking Lot, that's from 7:30 a.m. to 12 p.m. On Saturday, May the 4th, the City of Harlingen, along with the Mexican consulate, will be hosting their Fiesta de Señor de Mayo at Guttiérrez Park, Aplacita, that is from 3 p.m. to 8 p.m. We just printed out the posters, and I've left flyers here at the door for anybody who wants to go out. On Saturday, May the 4th, also, Viva la Vida, five-peat run hosted by the Valley AIDS Council, that's located at the Sports Complex on Wilson, running from 7 a.m. to 1 p.m. And lastly, on May the 11th, Blues on the Hill, 13th Annual, the first concert series takes place from 7 p.m. to 11 p.m., and the headliner for that event is Nick Moss.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's like a busy month, yeah.
Mayor, one other event to remind everybody of. This Saturday, the 6th, we're gonna have, Harlingen Crowd's gonna be putting, again, our annual spring trash patch. So, that's this Saturday. Still time to volunteer for that. That's gonna be the meeting place, right? Who'd go?
Okay, and now I'm gonna go to Item Two, which is, we've got a series of proclamations are all important, we're gonna try to get through each and every one of them. First one is child abuse prevention for April 28th, December 13th. Everybody involved in that, who wants to come up here. You know, we have Janet McGee and other people that want you there. Will you stand over here and look that way? Whereas keeping children safe is of the utmost importance to our city, and latest statistics from 2011 show that 1,570 children died from child abuse in America, 10 more deaths in the previous year, and additional 3.3 million are reported as abused and neglected annually. Whereas in 2012, there were two child abuse-related deaths that occurred in Rock County, with nine deaths in the previous year. Whereas 1,200 children currently receive services from the Department of Family and Protective Services in Cameron County, and whereas the Department of Family and Protective Services, law enforcement, officer schools, and medical members of our community who rescue abused and neglected children are greatly appreciated and acknowledged for their services. Whereas Blue Sunday Child Abuse Prevention was founded in Harlingen, Texas, in 1998, to service local abused and neglected children. Whereas relief programs such as Sibling Revelry, Blue Zoo Day, Annual Family Christmas Party, Conquer Teen Christmas Project provide basic needs such as car seats, furniture, bedding, quiet toys, and books for family court and emergency clothing, gift cards. And whereas raising awareness in our community by hosting prevention workshops, creating happy families, tip and coloring page, put foster kids first outreach, promoting the Blue Ribbon Campaign, whereas Blue Sunday is highly praised for creating national Blue Sunday, a day of prayer for abused children observed the last Sunday of April each year, began with 20 churches in the Rio Grande Valley, with 2.5 million people committed to pray annually. And whereas child abuse prevention is indeed everyone's job and commitment to support child abuse prevention efforts, not only during Child Abuse Prevention Month, but each day of the year, by joining in the Blue Sunday's challenge to pray, educate ourselves, and volunteer for the children of our nation until black and blue are just colors in a crayon box. Now, therefore, I christbox will Mayor and City Harlingen, be proud to claim April 28th, 2013, as Blue Sunday for the City of Harlingen, Texas, call all citizens to recognize this special day. We want to present this proclamation to you, and we want to thank you and all of your volunteers who work so hard to help these young people through these terrible times, and you make a difference in their lives, you comfort them, you give them hope, and you provide a lot of services. We want to try to, we want to try to get Harlingen to ramp up on this, don't we? We want to try to get our communities to really embrace this, do more, and try to get more awareness and more support for the work that you do.
Thank you, sir.
So, you want to say anything?
No, you said it all. You did a good job, too.
Thank you. All right, congratulations. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
If there's some brochures, and if anybody in the audience wants to pick those up on their way out, please, please do that.
Thank you, sir.
Item B is the Fair Housing Month, related month for April 2013, so if some folks want to come up here and receive that proclamation. So, anybody else who didn't come up here? Anyway, the National Fair, whereas the National Fair Housing Act of 1968 and the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988 prohibits discrimination in housing, declares the national policy to provide within constitutional limits for fair housing in the United States. And whereas the principle of fair housing is not a natural law and national policy, but a fundamental human concept and entitlement for all Americans. And whereas fair housing means that you may freely choose a place of residence without regard to your race, color, religion, national origin, ancestry, age, sex, familial status, physical handicap, disability, veteran status, marital status, sexual orientation, or gender identity, it is your right to be treated in an equal and nondiscriminatory manner. And whereas the 45th anniversary of the National Fair Housing Law during the month of April provides... month of April provides an opportunity for all Americans to recognize the complete success and goal of equal housing opportunity can only be accomplished with the help and cooperation of all Americans. Now, therefore, I Chris Boswell, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, do hereby proclaim the month of April two thousand and thirteen as Fair Housing Month. The City of Harlingen urges all citizens in this city to become aware and support the Fair Housing Law.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. We want to thank the city for all your assistance in providing fair housing to our lower income families. Thank you, and great city within the...
Thank you very much. Okay. Now we have the Community Development Block Grant Week, we're inviting the week of April first through April sixth, two thousand and thirteen, so I think now we want to have our City of the Chief Board members come up and, now Eddie. Now Eddie's coming. This is a great group of volunteers that do so much hard work for our city to help our community on block grant and work through that whole process. It's a, it's a labor of love for them, but thanks a lot for work. We appreciate it. Whereas the week of April first through sixth, two thousand and thirteen, has been designated as National Community Development Week by the National Community Development Association to celebrate the Community Development Block Grant Program. And whereas the Community Development Block Grant Program has as its primary objective the development of viable urban communities for providing decent housing, suitable living environment, and expanding economic opportunities principally for persons of low and moderate income. And whereas the City of Harlingen receives a direct allocation from the Community Development Block Grant Program annually to provide resources for a wide variety of community development activities that principally benefit low and moderate income persons, including the elderly and children. And whereas in our community and in communities throughout the nation, thirty-nine years of Community Development Block Grant Program funding has developed a strong network of relationships among local governments, residents, businesses, and nonprofits. Now, therefore, I Chris Boswell, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, do hereby proclaim the week of April first through April sixth, two thousand and thirteen, as Community Development Block Grant Week in support of this valued program that has made tremendous contribution to the viability of the housing stock, infrastructure, public services, and economic vitality of this community. And further, this community urges Congress and the administration to recognize the outstanding work being done locally and nationally by the CDPG program by supporting increased funding for the fiscal year two thousand and thirteen. And present this to you again, tell you how, how much good this program does in our community and that you all have been such good stewards and making good regulations in the commission about how these communities can, can really make a difference in our community even they have. So, thank you, Ken. Well said.
Just want to say thank you to our commissioners, the city, and especially, I mean, the people that work in that department for all their support and the work that they do. And most of the programs that we give to our community are very well, well needed. So, I just want to say thank you very much, commissioners, for your support, Mayor, and everybody.
Okay, thank you. Did you get it?
Several.
All right, last proclamation, Harlingen's Safe Digging Month. Jamie, Hyman, Hyman Hernandez with Texas eighty-eleven, and Jeannie, backroom co-chair of the RGP Damage Prevention Council.
And I'm Frances Orvis, Chairman.
Frances, Chris Boswell, I'd like to thank you and you're here with us. And we have a proclamation. Whereas thousands of times each year, the underground infrastructure in Texas is damaged by those who do not have underground lines located prior to digging, resulting in service interruptions, environmental damage, and threats of other safety. And whereas two thousand and five, the Federal Communications Commission designated eighty-one one, eight one one, to provide contractors and homeowners a simple number of contract utility operators to request the location of underground lines at the intended digging site. Whereas the River Grande Valley Damage Prevention Council is a stakeholder-driven organization dedicated to the prevention of damage to underground utilities in Harlingen and the surrounding area, promotes national eight one one, noting that this is an effort to reduce these damages. And whereas damage prevention is a shared responsibility by using safe digging practices, the contractors and homeowners of Harlingen can save time and money and help keep our infrastructure safe and connected. Now, therefore, I Chris Boswell, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, do hereby proclaim on behalf of the River Grande Valley Damage Prevention Council the month of April two thousand and thirteen, as Harlingen's Safe Digging Month, encourage contractors and homeowners throughout Harlingen and Cameron County to always call eight one one before digging is safe to do. So, thank you, thank you for raising awareness on this issue, and it's a safety issue for all, it's something that we all need to be aware of.
Yeah, that's...
As I say, but... We just like to thank the council and the mayor and the city for allowing us to get this from you guys and showing that you guys are staying up with what's going on around the nation, because April is National Safe Digging Month, and we have very few cities that participate. You guys kind of stepped up to the plate, and it helps make the City of Harlingen a safer place to live and work. And it's all because you guys are betting that happen.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So we dial eight one one?
Yes, sir.
And then somebody can come and check it properly?
When you dial eight one one, it's kind of like nine one one, you will get an emergency monitor. If you dial eight one one, you will get a, one of the call centers in Texas, and then you can tell them what work they're doing, and then they'll notify anybody that has facilities in that area, that the city or whoever is doing work in that area, so they'll come mark the lines so that you do not hit them while you're excavating.
And this is good for homeowners?
Yes, it's a homeowner's statement.
I think it's with the recent explosion they had in, was it Philadelphia or?
Yes, Philadelphia.
The restaurant. That goes to show that it can be really hazardous if you, if you don't take the right precautions when you're digging.
That is correct. And the phone call is free, the service is free, so there's no cost to either contractors or the homeowners. The utility companies put the bill for all services.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I just want to raise awareness. Thank you. Item three is the approval of the regular minutes of January sixteenth, two thousand and thirteen, and B, the regular meeting of March sixth, two thousand and thirteen. Are there any conditions or corrections to minutes? Hearing now, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, for minutes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Senate agenda items four A through F, is there a motion to adopt the Senate agenda? Hold on a second, Mayor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Skip item five for the President and go to item seven, consider to take action to ratify the authorization of sale of the United Healthcare Services aim for two million three hundred, three thousand dollars located at twenty-two, twenty-two South Sunshine Strip, also known as Harlingen Town Center subdivision. Anybody here from the EDC on that?
Mayor, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we ratify the sale.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion?
If my memory serves me correct, this is a higher sale price, maybe the average, right? Were you under two million on the last one? So we're actually coming out a little better?
Correct.
Consider the economic...
Yeah, and the, I think we have about, the United Healthcare Services will remain in the building, the investor, of course, wants the lease with, with them, so both of them, it's to their advantage. And to do that, create a three million dollar annual payroll out there with this project, United Healthcare on their way to seven hundred and fifty jobs, they're about four hundred and fifty right now. And it's been a great, uh, business to locate in our community in Fortune twenty-five. Company, by selling the building, the EDC will have additional revenues that they can invest in other projects. So...
Yeah, but you might not want to make that comment about it being lower in case...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
In case the deal hadn't closed yet, you may not want to mention that about it was lower at one time.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item A, consider to take action to approve a lease agreement between the City of Harlingen and Cameron County Elections Department for the use of one auto mark machine and one M one hundred scanner precinct counter to conduct early voting. The City of Harlingen made a lone two thousand and thirteen general election, total cost of one thousand fifteen dollars. Is there a motion to approve the lease agreement?
I'll make the motion, we approve that.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item nine, consider to take action to approve and adopt a resolution appointing an early voting ballot board, presiding judge, and an alternate presiding judge, appointing the presiding judges and alternate presiding judges, each to serve as election officials for the City of Harlingen May eleventh, two thousand and thirteen general election to elect a mayor and two commissioners for District One and Two to the Harlingen City Commission. Is there a motion to approve and adopt the resolution?
Yeah, I'll make it.
Okay, Commissioner Mesmer made the motion.
I'll second that.
Officially, I'll, second.
Mayor, I'd just like to point out one change. The resolution that we provided in the package did not have a deciding judge for District One, and I have, we got confirmation from that person, Maria Diana Esparza, so I placed the revised resolution just to let you know that she had dedicated that name.
Okay, so the motion was as to the revised resolution that you have in front of you.
Is that including all these names?
Yes, and then probably at the next meeting, I'll come back and for the appointment of the alternate judges for District Four, for the...
Okay, we have a motion to second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item ten, consider to take action to approve and adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to seek grant funding in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, three hundred dollars in the office of the governor of victims of crime act formula grant program of the City of Harlingen Police Department for payment of salaries and benefits for crime victim liaison. Total cost of this project, including the city's match, is forty-seven thousand, eight hundred seventy-five dollars. Chief?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Our item is to do exactly that. In fact, it's just to continue the program. We've had it in place for over six years, and again, it mirrors last year's. It's just to continue the program of our crime victim liaison. Free money.
Mayor, make a motion and we take action.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. All right, thank you, Chief. Uh, this time I'm going to withdraw from the meeting, I filed an affidavit on item number five, and...
Rockton, I'd like to announce that the mayor has recused himself.
Yes, sir, surely. Let the record reflect that, Mayor Boswell, has exited the brochure.
Okay, item five, the public hearing is considering an ordinance on perjury to abandon and authorize the mayor to execute a special warranty deed on a twenty-foot wide alley. Do I need to read this whole caption here?
Yes.
Being a point one one five acre tract of land out of Block Eight, East Park Terrace Subdivision located on seventy-seven Sunshine Strip north of Monroe Avenue, an eighty-foot wide roadway out of Monroe Avenue being a point four five nine acre tract of land located between Block A and D, East Park Terrace Subdivision, a twenty-foot wide alley being a point one one five acre tract of land out of Block B, East Park Terrace Subdivision located west of seventy-seven Sunshine Strip between Jackson Avenue and Monroe Avenue, and eighty-foot wide, eighty-foot roadway, road, roadway out of Jackson Avenue being a four, point four five nine acre tract of land between, located between Blocks D and E of East Park Terrace Subdivision, a twenty-foot wide alley being a point one one five acre tract of land out of Block B, East Park Terrace Subdivision located west of seventy-seven Sunshine Strip between Jackson Avenue and Van Buren Avenue, and eighty-foot road, roadway out of the Van Buren Avenue being a point four five nine acre tract of land located between Blocks E and H, East Park Terrace Subdivision, and a twenty-foot wide alley being a point one one five acre tract of land out of Block H, East Park Terrace Subdivision located west of seventy-seven Sunshine Strip between Harrison and Van Buren Avenue. And having read that, it was...
Good evening, Mayor Proton and Commissioners. The Harlingen School District is requesting abandonment of four alley rightways and three road rightways to allow for proposed aquatic center and parking lots to be located on the Lotus Stadium Complex. These are the rightways that you see in the hash on the site plan, it's a total of like seven rightways. Technically, the proposed aquatic center would be approaching on the, one of the alley rightways north of Monroe Avenue and the proposed parking lot, which leaves a park number of like two hundred and fourteen spaces, it would be approaching the rightway, it would have been from Monroe Avenue. Subject rightways are not in use by the city. The school district requested the remaining rightways, which would be the remaining five rightways, which would be these rightways to be included, and request to correct actually encroachments of existing school district structures on the rightway. The city has no official record, those rightways were abandoned by the city, that's why the school district requested this on the agenda. These rightways have been maintained by the school district for many years. This request was reviewed by the engineering department and the utility companies, and neither the engineering department or the utility companies had any objection to the abandonment. This is generally the area where the aquatic center would be in, this is the parking area. This is a proposed aquatic center, a site plan in the proposed two hundred and fourteen space parking lot for the aquatic center in the Lotus Stadium Complex. This is what the, the aquatic center. The staff is recommending approval of the request. I'll take any questions, any representatives from the school district also pressing any questions.
Okay, this is a public hearing item, so I'm gonna go ahead and open it. Any comments for or against this item? One more chance, anybody for or against? Okay, having done, I'm gonna close the public hearing, go into item B, to consider and take action to approve the ordinance on perjury.
And just for record, Mayor Proton, although this ordinance is authorizing the mayor, since the mayor does have a conflict of interest, the mayor of Proton will be responsible for serving as mayor for the signature of this ordinance. An ordinance abandoning and authorizing the mayor to execute a special warranty deed on a twenty-foot wide alley being a zero point one one five plus or minus acre tract of land out of Block Eight, East Park Terrace Subdivision located on seventy-seven Sunshine Strip north of Monroe Avenue, and eighty-foot wide roadway out of Monroe Avenue being a zero point four five nine plus or minus acre tract of land located between Block A and D, East Park Terrace Subdivision, a twenty wide, twenty-foot wide alley being a zero point one one five plus or minus acre tract of land out of Block D, East Park Terrace Subdivision located west of seventy-seven Sunshine Strip between Jackson Avenue and Monroe Avenue, and eighty-foot roadway out of Jackson Avenue being a zero point four five nine plus or minus acre tract of land located between Blocks D and E, East Park Terrace Subdivision, a twenty-foot wide alley being a zero point one one five plus or minus acre tract of land out of Block E, East Park Terrace Subdivision located west of seventy-seven Sunshine Strip between Harrison Avenue and Van Buren Avenue, and eighty-foot roadway out of Van Buren Avenue being zero point four five nine plus or minus acre tract of land located between Blocks E and H, East Park Terrace Subdivision, and a twenty-foot wide alley being a zero point one one five plus or minus acre tract of land out of Block H, East Park Terrace Subdivision located west of seventy-seven Sunshine Strip between Harrison Avenue and Van Buren Avenue.
Can I entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve this. That's rep. Second.
Any discussion? And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Okay, a motion to approve.
There are no other options.
We're not gonna do a quarter point. And that concludes our meeting tonight.